Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors October 18, 2022 meeting. If you could please stand for the fudge.
I do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have staff announcements. I believe we have Corey Allen. Who's up first? Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Corey Allen Health and Human Services Agency. I just noticed our plexiglass is gone. This feels much more connectable. I wanted to announce that Governor Newsom has sent a press release out publicly noting the desire to end the COVID-19 state of emergency that will end on February 28, 2023, and that will simply start the process of ending several elements of restrictions and other elements to protect the residents of our communities. So, very limited information on practical guidelines, but I did want to put the information out there and take this opportunity to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of the team within Health and Human Services throughout these several years of this pandemic. The effort issue is not over, but it is something that is starting to phase away. We still have a mobile van that still does provide testing. It now is switched to an antigen only, meaning that they will provide a take-home test. The PCR testing process is seemingly phasing away. So, much more to come, but I did want to take this moment to acknowledge the efforts of the team within my agency and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey. I believe Mr. Oliver, did you have staff comment? No, you didn't? Okay. Are there any other staff announcements? Are there any online? No, there are none. With that, we'll move on to general public comment. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will continue as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. At this time, I'm going to start with Zoom. Are there any public comments on Zoom?
There are not at this time. Okay, thank you. I'll move it to the room. Are there any public comment? Al, good morning. How are you?
I'd like to comment on the last Board of Supervisors meeting, which was a training session to learn how to be more effective in governance. And it was very interesting. It was well done. And thank heaven we've got such a good board. There wasn't really a whole lot to discuss and curb problems because it wasn't really very many. One of the things that I'm trying to compress five hours into three minutes, so forgive me, I'm a little fast here. One of the comments that I made at that time was "Above all else, do no harm." The word "harm" is a moral word. This meeting was about process, not purpose. And as you may know, there's two parts to it. Purpose, this has to do with morality, and the other one is process, which doesn't consider moral questions. And so, we trained ourselves really well on process, but there was no discussion about purpose. And one of the things, one thing that was really good, I thought, was it talked about praise in public and discipline in private. This has to do with department heads, and that makes good sense, but we didn't seem to have a problem along those lines. At least, I couldn't pick that up. One of the things that is important to our taxpayers, I think, is try to preserve our Constitution and our free society. And previously, I've given Supervisors copies of the Constitution. I attended a Democratic meeting, and they're really nice to me, and they gave me a copy of the Constitution. And they don't realize that perhaps that Marxism is totally the opposite of our U.S. Constitution. In the Constitution, there's two parts that have to do with the purpose of government, and they're in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, and actually through the whole document, but those particular parts to it are very clear. The purpose, the human rights basically are the right to life, liberty, and property. And in both of those amendments, you'll see, oh, you got your copy. I must have caught you before. So, if we can keep that in mind when we're dealing with copyrights issues, it'd be really helpful and also help our economy. And six seconds left, and I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Are there any other public comment?
Good morning. Good morning, y'all. You know, I've got comments about everything, and I'm going to try and keep my traps shut. Take something to pull me out of my hole in the hill to come down here. Thanks for helping us keep a few trees on Double Springs. The traffic's horrendous once again. It's just death-defying. But I come here today, I come here to talk about these guys. This is supposed to be a union that represents home care workers. And by God, I tell you, they have ripped us off so bad. Our contract expired 12 years ago. 12 years ago, I stopped paying dues to this union when, as a minimum wage worker, I found out our president was paid over a quarter of a million dollars a year to represent a bunch of dirt-grubbing home care workers. Nobody else wants this job, minimum wage, and these fat cats are sucking us dry. So, I stopped paying dues. I participated in every damn contract we tried to negotiate, but something always came up more important than home care contracts. So, I think every county in the state has completed a contract. We negotiated our last contract in 2007. That's the last time we sat down with y'all and hammered something out. Can't tell you what I'd like to hammer now. I come down here to keep from going postal, mainly. It's kind of a therapy, so I don't go off on anyone or any organization, like a union, largest union in the state, and we have minimum wages for home care workers, which I've been for 23 years. Still, minimum wage. I ain't going to give them another damn penny. You watch them come in here and say, "Oh, we're representing our poor home care workers. Give them better wages." Well, I'm asking you to do something that they haven't done for us. Respect us, reward us, and remember us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? I see none in the room. I'm going to double check Zoom. There are none on Zoom. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routinely non-consventional. They will be acted upon the board at one time without discussion. Are there any board members that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? See none. Is there any staff? None. Is there any public comment on consent agenda? Is there any on Zoom?
There is not.
Okay. And seeing none in the room, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is regular agenda item number seven. If the clerk could please read out.
Item number seven is an ordinance from the Building Department. Number one, conduct a public hearing. Number two, find exempt from CEQA. Number three, adopt an ordinance repealing Chapter 8.10 Fire and Life Safety, Chapter of Calaveras County Code, and adopting 8.10 Calaveras County Addressing Code of the Calaveras County Code. And number four, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Good morning. I believe I need to open the public hearing before you start talking. So, hold on one second. With that, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official, bringing back to you the ordinance establishing or re-establishing the county addressing code. Your board heard this item September 27, and in that hearing, you had recommended two changes. Those changes have been made, one of them adding the building official authorized to use discretion in the interpretation of the standard in the event that mitigating circumstances prevent strict enforcement of these standards, and also the change that removed county surveyor from the process and changing that to building official. Coupled with the item that we brought to you last time that you decided not to add the additional language to 810-120B, that does give the building official the ability to review addressing requests and make determinations when things don't quite fit into the framework. So, we have made all those changes, and staff is now asking that you adopt this ordinance.
Do the ladies stop it?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Ms. Calloway?
I had some questions. I believe, I think I sent them to you. On all building other than accessory building, I really wasn't clear on 810-100C and 120A1. 100C, to assign physical addresses other than accessory in accordance with this chapter. So, then I thought, okay, what is, where are we on that? And then I went to 120...
I can answer that for you, ma'am.
No, I went to 10 on the definition. I really wasn't clear what you're saying. If I have an accessory building, there isn't a separate address for that?
That's correct. This is referencing 4290 regs where essentially your addressing requirements are on occupiable structures. So, accessory structures like garages, barns, sheds, don't typically get their own address. If an accessory is an accessory dwelling, however, or you have a business structure on the property, because that is an occupiable building, that would receive a separate address. And that does coincide with other, like utility services. PG&E will have different contracts for residential or commercial or agricultural use. They usually pin that to the permit or the type of building, and we assign addresses that they actually benefit from that in creating their contracts.
Okay, so you give an address to an accessory dwelling?
Yes, but not an accessory structure like a shed.
So, if you have a piece of property that's dual-use, a manufacturing and a house, do they get two addresses?
They typically would, yes.
So, when it says that, so I read it as if they don't get it. That's how I was reading all this on accessory buildings.
Which section here?
And then... So, that's, okay. Okay, so under 120A1, 810-120A1?
Yes.
A new building that is not an accessory building, an assignment of an address?
Correct.
So, that would be where the building officials discretion comes in and thinks, okay, the car repair places, the widget manufacturing that's on the same parcel as a residence will have its own address?
Typically, yes. Going back to the primary reason being fire safety and access for emergency services. So, the fire department needs to know, do I go to the house and help them there, or is that injury or accident at the commercial facility? So, you would typically have two different addresses there. But for accessory structures, so for instance, it does say, to just kind of breeze through here, "An address conforming to the CNS shall be assigned by the building official in accordance with this chapter when any of the following occur. A new building permit is issued for any building that is not an accessory building." And then it goes on to say on item two, "A new building permit is issued for a new dwelling unit or accessory dwelling." So, we do pull that out separately.
I think if I made the, I think the distinction Supervisor Calloway is when you look in the definitions, we tie the definition of accessory building to the way that it's defined in the State Building Code. And Doug can, or Mr. Oliver can confirm this, but my hunch is that if it's a shed or a garage, that's what's defined in building code as an accessory building. Those things would not get their own address. But if it were, in your example, if it were a separate widget manufacturing facility, that would probably not be an accessory building under the building, State Building Code, and so that would receive an address.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other board questions? Okay, with that, I am going to turn it over to public comment, and I'll start with Zoom. Are there any online public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. Are there any in the room public comment? Okay, see none. I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Okay. With that, is there any motion to approve this item?
Some move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, passage five oh. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, so Ms. Galino can set up the laptop for the next agenda item presentation. Okay, thank you. Welcome back. Next on our agenda is item number eight. Could the clerk please read out?
Item number eight is informational item from Economic and Community Development. Receive a presentation on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, CEDS, for Calaveras County.
At this time, I will turn it over to Kathy Galino, and we also have Ms. Dahl joining us by Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Frolendorf and Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. What I have before you today is a presentation that is put on by Chabon Concepts, Vicky Dahl, who is a consultant to the Central Sierra Economic Development District. We're currently in the process of doing a comprehensive economic development strategy. It's a five-year strategy that encompasses not just Calaveras County, but also Amador County, Alpine County, Toaime County, Mariposa County, the cities of Angels Camp, and Sonora. So, I have Vicky Dahl online, and I will go ahead and advance slides for you, Vicky. We'll do the presentation first, followed by the survey results. Bless you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Thank you for the introduction, explanation of what these SEDS is. If you could advance the slide. And just to reiterate, my name is Vicky Dahl. I am with Chabon Concepts, who is an economic development consulting firm, along with Farmer Wafflin, who is joining me on Zoom. And we are both working along with an estate planning and development collective at Chico State to prepare this regional five-year plan. So, I think the critical part of what this SEDS is, is that it is really a regional plan. It does not replace or compete with any existing or local plans that are in the works. It's meant to leverage and support different strategies and different projects and programs that the local jurisdictions have, and hopefully to build capacity by collaboratively initiating and implementing some of the strategies. And next slide. At this time, I have been working on it, conducting a lot of interviews and online survey, collecting information, looking at existing studies and plans, and expect and hope to have a draft document available for the SEDS committee grounded in December. And the, with, there's a 30-year public comment, or 30-day public comment period at that time, and we'll make whatever revisions are deemed at that time. Then it goes as the CSSEBD accepts it, adopts it, then sent to EDA, which also has a 30-day review. So, there may be some additions or changes or tweaks that need to be made at that time. So, next slide. Again, it is asset-based, community-informed. As I said, we have launched a survey. The survey is still open, and we'll keep it open, I would say, until probably early early December, maybe mid-November. We've gotten between the interviews, telephone interviews that Ball and I have done, as well as the return on the interviews, we have gotten probably about 215, 220 so far. And there are, I believe, some of the survey results in this presentation. So, we're gathering information as far as the assets, challenges, basically a SWOT, identify some of the opportunities, and perhaps some strategies that we can define and address some of the challenges and take advantage of some of the assets and opportunities, and finally, develop an action plan for implementation over the next five years. And next slide. Okay, so these are the, based on data research, as well as community input through the survey and interviews. These are the critical issues, and I don't think that there's anything here that would be a big surprise to anyone. It is, it has been, you know, diverse industry. Housing has maybe become a little bit more critical lately, but I think everything here has been a challenge in the region, maybe in more counties than in others. But the key is now finding some programs, finding some resources to make progress on some of these issues. And next. Okay, so we didn't have, we didn't have the survey, and I can send that to you, Kathy.
Vicky, this is Vicky. I do have the survey. It's in a separate PowerPoint, so hang on.
Okay, if you want to, sure.
Oops. Here we go.
So, we can go through, there's only a few slides on the survey. We can go through that very quickly.
Here's the survey results. I have it coming up. Can you see on the screen that?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so the next slide shows you the distribution of where we're getting some, the participation. I don't have the particular numbers here, but Amador is lightly represented, but I'm not concerned about that because Amador went through this process just a year or two ago. I don't think from what we're seeing, not a lot has changed, so I don't have a problem with that. Mariposa has had, I mean, this was, the survey was launched at the time of fires broke out, so that was unfortunate timing. And keep in mind that the unknown section, this was not something that, this was not a question that was required. So, people could choose to tell us where they live, or they could choose to ignore that question. So, that unknown could be well-represented of all the different areas. So, next slide. This is just a quick report of some of the assets and challenges, and I, again, I think these match well with the previous slide and what we have found through data and through our research and through our interviews. So, I think everybody is pretty consistent and in agreement as to what the critical issues are, as assets. And then, I believe, the next slide on the challenges that need to be addressed. I don't know that there's a lot we can do about government regulations because most of those are going to be state and federal. So, but the other items, I think, are spot-on. And the next slide are the opportunities that we could find ways to take advantage of. And I do think the biggest, one of the biggest is going to be entrepreneurship, because I don't have the number in front of me, but a big majority of the businesses in the region are small businesses. So, I think that entrepreneur, entrepreneurial help and support is going to be important, both to the success of the businesses and even in diversifying. And then the final slide. So, these, this is paraphrase. These are some of the comments that were made and just the open-ended questions and common areas from the survey. And I tried to paraphrase them. We will provide the specific full comments within the survey report that will be an appendix to the SEDS. I just wanted to give you all a feel as to what sort of comments are being made and suggestions and some questions that are being made. So, that. And if others anything you wanted to add? No, not at this time, other than I think it was over 95% of businesses in the district employ five people or less. That's a small business.
Yeah, that's a small business.
Yeah.
Micro-business is actually.
Micro, yes. So, any special comments?
Are there any board, Ms. Calloway?
Yes, I'm interested in what was the outcome and results of past SEDS?
That is part of what we'll be taking a look at. We will need to take a look at the strategies that were in the previous SEDS, do a little bit of research, calling to find out what has progressed, what has changed, if anything has changed from that. So, that will be part of the final block, that we don't have that completed as yet.
Because I guess I think it's critical. When I worked on the SEDS years ago, we talked living wage, talent, pipeline, same thing.
Yeah.
And we keep talking the same thing, and maybe we just need to look at things a little differently, not that I have ideas. Also, I questioned the one on infrastructure, reliable electric grid. That's not under the control
Right.
of any of the counties here.
Understood.
So, I couldn't understand why... So we couldn't understand why, um, that's on, I mean.
Well, that was a comment made from, from the public, that it was a critical issue is the reliability of the, the power grid. And I, I agree, it's not within the jurisdiction's, uh, ability or purview to, to address that.
So we're going to be putting things in the SEDS that are not under the jurisdiction of what the, these counties or some of the New York counties.
No, 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 no. No, we'll acknowledge that there are challenges, but as far as implementation, it's only, it's got to be only what, what you and the jurisdictions in collaboration with some of the other agencies can do. We can't, we can't ask you to solve the power grid. I wish I could, but we wouldn't do that to you.
No, no, well, we don't like to, but, um, I guess for me, I'm seeing the same thing I saw years ago. And, um, I mean, I know things have changed. There's been more funding for broadband. You know, it used to be cell service. And now that's sort of, counties have invested with, through the private sector, and there's funding now for broadband expansion. So I can see that. I guess, are we putting a SEDS together that's within the control of these counties? Or it's just a nice document?
No, I hope it's, well, I hope it's a nice document, but I hope it's a little bit more useful than that. It's things like the, the broadband and the power grid that are not within your purview to solve these problems, but hopefully we can find a way that your voice can be heard. Again, through, through some collaborative efforts with some of the other organizations and, and the agencies. But the, the key to a SEDS really is the implementation and how do you best implement and getting all those who have the researches and the power to participate, getting them to participate.
Well, I mean, I think broadband's a good example where there's been cooperation with the counties and with our regional council of rural counties. I mean, there's, things have been happening. But I look at a lot of this, like, well, we need a living wage, and yet if 95% of the employers have five or less employees, I mean, we're still talking the same thing.
Right.
And I sort of feel good. And I'm, I'm more of a, okay, what kinds of things, what kinds of things can we do? Which is why I was interested in what the outcomes and results have been of a past SEDS.
Right, and I think that's an important, um, component to include. And as Vicky had mentioned, that it will be something that we will be addressing. But I think it's also not a surprise that you're going to find sort of the same topics or the same issues, um, five years ago as they are today, because, for example, workforce issues and skill shortages is not going to be accomplished. Uh, you can't say, oh, that's, we're going to, we're going to solve that problem in five years. And I imagine five years from now, we're still going to, it's still going to be on the list. But what's important, as you had, um, questioned about Marita, is have we made it, since last five years ago, have we made any progress? And if we haven't made any progress, then yeah, that's a, I think that's going to be a, certainly a big, like, flag about approach. But as yet, we haven't delved into that question, um, because we are still tackling and finding out what the key issues are. And the fact that they resemble key issues five years ago, I, I don't think should be a surprise.
No, and I'm not even talking, I'm talking about further back than that. Because as on Central Sierra, the last one was on there about 15 years ago.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I totally believe in this concept. I really like the, the partnership. But I keep seeing the same thing over again. And I guess that's all I'm trying, which is why I'm interested in since we started at whatever 15, 20 years ago, what kinds of things have we done? I can see
Right, right.
we have done things with broadband. I think, um, Columbia College has gotten some more skilled classes, like Bret Hart High School has
Who?
skilled classes.
Right, right, right.
So, I mean, there are things that, that are kind of happening. But living wages, that hasn't changed, talent, pipeline, hasn't changed. That's all I'm, don't want to
Right, right.
I'm just interested in what our report card has been since we've started doing this. And maybe we need to not say the same things over again, but have a working plan that moves us to a point where we can say, yeah, we're, like with broadband, yes, we've done these five things over the last five years, and we're so much better now than we were five years ago.
Right.
Anyway, end of conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you provide a stopper?
First of all, I want to acknowledge Vicky Doll. Thank you for, uh, work, working through this with the Central Sierra, Sierra Economic Development District. And I do want to say hello, Fawn.
Hey, Ben.
Former, former planning commissioner in District Two, Calvers County, very, very wise lady that I've known for a very long time. She was, uh, you know, snapping me into line a long time ago on McCallum Hill, so, you know, so. And I had the pleasure of serving with her on the planning commission, so I got, I got to learn a lot from her. Moving on to, to some of Ms. Coway's points. You know, some of these things have been brought up for, let's say, 20 years plus, because they are root, the roots of the problems in rural areas, and they can, they continue to be. Um, you know, and so therefore, they would still be included as we work forward, even though, you know, they haven't been addressed. And, uh, so, something else to talk about, this is overall for five counties, not to interfere with any certain strategy put forward by individual counties, but help to facilitate, um, money coming from the state, because the state requires this for these type of economic development agencies to have in place to be able to facilitate said monies coming down the pipeline. Uh, also, I would like to say that, you know, you know, we don't have a lot of control over a lot of these things in an economic development strategy, because we aren't the business people. We, our, our, our biggest issue is to be able to facilitate policy and land use to the point where we can help them be successful in developing their businesses. You know, I, uh, we're required by the state to update this every so often, and moving forward, and I, uh, just in, since I, you know, I'm in my fourth year on the Central Sierra Economic Development District, and we put forward a different strategy, uh, since I've been on the Central Sierra Economic Development District. And we're moving forward with a multiple things, everything from getting our SEDS to, uh, you know, the COVID relief funds coming in for the eastern Sierra region and everything else. So we're working on bringing in money from the state to be able to facilitate more services within, within our region. There's a lot of opportunity, and, uh, without this, the opportunity may not be realized. And I just want to thank everyone for their work. I actually want to say, if you go back to that pine respondents, TWOM is very, very large, but Calvers had a very large lion's share. Um, that, that would be, I want to thank Kathy Galino for giving out phone numbers to, to our partners so that they could actually get ahold of people within Calvers County. We had very good amount of respondents actually in Calvers County for this. Generally, we don't have a lot, too many people respond to these type of things here. And, uh, you know, I'm happy with what, what we have moving forward. Hopefully, we can pull in more. You know, it's, it's, as with anything in the state, it's a almost painfully slow process, you know, before we realize, you know, success, like qualifying for grants in the future. And at this point, I am confident that we're moving forward in a way that we can have an overall general plan for the rural areas that, um, will allow us to actually incorporate what our priorities, you know, are in Calvers County, so that we can facilitate those grant funds coming in, so that we can realize the benefit of some of our tax money coming back to our rural area.
Gay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ben. And, Marita, I, I was around during that time, and I agree with you, say, it keeps going, but I, I think, um, at least this plan that we're talking about here and looking for grant funding, we may start seeing some changes once this thing is all in place, hopefully, what you've brought up and what we've seen over the course of the years. And, um, Fawn, I'm going to say hi to you, and, um, your work is still not done with Ben, so.
Thank you, Gary.
I just want to say one thing, and I'm going back to the last slide that says ideas, suggestions, and requests, and the very first item on that says tax commercial spaces that sit unoccupied. Well, the owner of those commercial spaces is in business himself, or theirselves. That, that's their business. And, and we're going about what we can do to improve businesses, to get more businesses open. He's trying to recruit people to rent those spaces out. I'm sure he doesn't want to set that, he has lost income with any open space sitting there not occupied and being leased out. So I, I want to say, I'm just not against taxing somebody that's trying to get their business going and, and get all their spaces occupied. It just doesn't make sense to me to tax somebody on that based on the fact that they're in a business theirselves, so. Other than that, I agreed on some of the things that Marita said and a lot of what Ben said, and I understand this whole thing is, is needed in order to get the funding coming down from the state and possibly federal government grants too, so. Thank you for all of the work you guys did in putting this together.
Thank you.
Jack, do you have anything?
No.
No? Okay.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Um, I have comment, question. So piggybacking off of what Marita said earlier about not having control of, um, the power grid, um, I was somewhat surprised not to see the ideas and suggestions list not talking about, um, microgrid, battery banking, hydrogen, um, you know, I know, I know there's an array of those, um, and that would vary from areas in the region, but I was surprised that we, this wasn't in here. Um, we, it focused more on residential housing, but it didn't focus on, um, how we could support ourselves through the public utility that we do have in this region, especially with hydro, um, I know with the drought, but there's been some innovative ideas, um, coming out with microgrid and hydrogen coming down the pipe. I'd like to see that, if that's possible, as a solution. Or is there, did it come up and there was a reason why it didn't make the, make the list?
No, I, I agree with you, and what, I think what you're, um, talking about there are the solutions to some of the issues that are listed here. So, yeah, um, the power grid is an issue, so what are the solutions? And those are some of the, the, the items that will hopefully come, will be able to incorporate into the strategies that we come up with on the action plan. Right, because at this point, we are just talking about the economic conditions. We're not talking about ways to address either opportunities or challenges. And that would be in the, whatever, the action portion of this, of this, um, of this plan, which were not there yet.
Well, I was also thinking of it not just as a solution, but a way that public entities can also expand the diversity of the organization for employees as well. You know, there's a shift from what, how we're currently operating on certain utility districts, and is there an opportunity to support them to expand, to bring in those different skill sets, um, within the community? So that, that's also the other side of what I was looking at, is how do we help them diversify themselves and evolve with the changing dynamics as well? But that's all I, I had, it's from both sides, I guess, solution and diversifying an organization. Um, I did not think you, um, this was, I'll echo what Ben and Gay have said, everyone else, um, you guys have put a lot of time and work into this, and I appreciate, um, the presentation is very informative.
And if I can add, I just want to let everybody know that we will be publicizing the survey. Again, I'll keep pushing that out, and any words that you guys can share out with your colleagues and constituents, that'd be great. So we're going to keep this going until, I think you said, Vicky, the first week of November?
It's open now. I think that, that, that decision is yet to be made, but there's no problem in keeping it open. And I think it will probably be at the conclusion of, you know, sort of the economic conditions portion, you know, where we've, where we're setting that aside and then moving into more of the, um, the strategy, the strategic aspect of the plan.
Great, thank you.
So if there are any other board questions or comments for staff, I'd like to open it to public comment. Are there any more board members? No? Okay. So Robin, can we start with Zoom? Are there any public comments on Zoom?
There are not at this time.
Okay. Are there any public comment in the room?
House of Gallow, Taxpayer Association, and I want to compliment Kathy, the good work she does. There's, uh, many billions of dollars, maybe 18 billion dollars, uh, being lost and due to wildland fires. And, um, our, our experts in fire tell us that the most important thing is first response to put out a fire. And I think there's, never found anybody that disagrees with that. However, when we have a wildland fire, there's not even an attempt at a first response. Instead, they go to the next position, which could be miles away, to set up backfires, and, and that's where the billions and billions of dollars are, are lost, and lives too. People's lives are lost. Not myself, but somebody else made the comment that other areas in the world have found that, uh, a first strike with, um, these jumbo jets that are full of fire retardant or water can put out these first fires, provided they're airborne and nearby. Airborne and nearby. So within, uh, if the, if the aircraft is, uh, six miles away, they can be there within a minute, which can save billions of dollars, even though it may cost a quarter million to have, have that aircraft there. And I, I'm friends with, uh, California Fire, uh, know, have a way of tracing the most dangerous times and dangerous places due to history. So we don't have to have aircraft flying everywhere. And so that's something that, uh, could be looked at on, from an economic development standpoint. In this case, you're avoiding an economic loss. Now, another issue is privatization. Some communities have a private, private fire departments, and the economic comparison is very favorable, and they're usually run by, uh, insurance companies. That's another thing our economic development people can look at. And I think I'm getting close to the end of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any, any other public comments, either on Zoom or no? Seeing none, um, this was an informational item, not action, so again, thank you for being here today. here today and presenting this to us.
Thank you very much. It's nice seeing you all. Take care. Thanks for giving us the time this morning.
Thanks, Father.
With that, we'll move on to supervisor announcement, and I will start to my left with Supervisor Callaway.
Oh, this is gonna be fun for me.
Mike, I should have started with Ben, then.
So, Sunday, Vallesito had Vallesito Days, and so I had to do some research. I was one of the speakers. And there are a couple of things I want to mention. The first school district in Vallesito was established by the Board of Supervisors, so we were involved in education. And there was a special tax of five cents on $100 of assessed value. Okay. And then an example of taxes. There was a Vallesito family who were assessed $60 for their 18 acres and $60 for improvements. But the best part, they paid $54 for their house, their fence, their furniture, their poultry, their dog, and a gun compared to today. We had three, no offense, Barbara Sullivan, if you're listening, we had three treasurers who absconded with money. And the best one, in 1871, the Board of Supervisors had a music festival to raise money to pay off the county debt. There was a drawing for gold coins that were done by well-known and responsible citizens, and all monies were given to the board for the liquidation of county debt. So as this board goes forward to look at creative ways to raise money, we might consider having a festival. And so, I just, the history in Calaveras, I'm sure other counties, is also colorful, but it was definitely, oh, and the three longest-serving supervisors in this county were supervisors at Vallesito. The first one was served as a supervisor for over 40 years, and Tom Tryon and myself. And, so now on to my schedule. I'm going to be going to an AQUA meeting in the afternoon, Thursday afternoon, that's, I believe, hosted by CCWD at the Native Sons. And that's all I have to report. Thank you. Be that, Garamendi.
If we've got a colorful history, you are certainly part of that color that's gone on in this county. It is, is definitely, oh, what I wanted to say was, thank you, ma'am, should I digress? I'll be in Solano County on Wednesday night and Thursday, where we're gonna do a deep dive with our, with Golden State Financial Authority, which we are a member of, and Golden State Natural Resources, which you may know better as the Pellet Mill Project in Topeka County and Lassen County. So, we're gonna do the deep dive on that for figuring out what's going on there. It's always great to see press headlines, but bottom line is the bottom line. So we'll have to figure all that out. So that's where I'll be for that part of this week. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes, I'll be heading out to Newport Beach for a LAFCO convention. I'll be there for the rest of the week. And, Marita, very interesting, are you suggesting that we put on a rock concert to pay off all our debts?
Yeah, I did.
Then we put you in charge.
Oh, that would be my pleasure.
Just remember, just remember the $9 million deficit we have, so that's what you have the goal for.
No, it's whatever our CAO needs after he takes care of the $9 million.
I attended the hard, prior to our board little getaway last week, you know, I think we should report out on that, it cost the county some money. But it was a very healthy thing. I look forward to working with the rest of the board and moving forward, you know. And then prior to heading to that, Hardwood Advisory Committee met on Thursday at 1:00. You know, lot, lot, a lot of good ideas coming, coming out of everyone, working for on the hardwood oak ordinance. I'm sorry. But, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little more time. Hopefully, we can get something before the board sooner or later, but it still has to go to the Plan Commission. Gabriel's working on it, but we'll see, we'll see, we'll see if we can get it before the end of the year, because, you know, I'd love to have Ms. Callaway be part of that in the ending, but, you know, we're very...
She said oak, I heard.
Okay. But, but we're on a very short runway, but, you know, if it does end up going into next year, we'll keep you in mind. I'll even try and get your name put in there somewhere.
Well, I don't think I can beat Ms. Callaway. I too am attempting to attend the AQUA on Thursday, and then there's also Mountain Counties event that evening as well, that I will be attending. Last week, I attended a town hall in Copperapples, which Congressman McClintock was at. That was interesting to listen to the constituents' concerns expressed to the congressman. That was attended by local businesses. CCWD was the, the hospital was the, there was a variety of diverse organizations and individuals that were there. And then I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues and to the CAO and county council for a very well put-on workshop last Thursday and Friday. So thank you for putting that together, and thank you all of you for attending and making that a good, a good time. So, like Ben said, I too look forward to continuing to work on that. So with that, I'll move on to closed session. We will be convening in the closed session, but before we report out today's closed session, we need to report out the last closed session. So I will turn it over to the clerk for that first, and then she will read out the closed session agenda items, number nine.
To report out for closed session for the October 11th meeting, item number one, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CV44471. There was no reportable board action. Item number two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Nick Marvin and Corey Allen regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015. There was no reportable board action. Item number three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Supervisor Garamendi recused himself due to a conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87100. There was no reportable board action. The closed session item for today's agenda, item number nine, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
So with that, is there any public comment? I'm seeing none in the room. I will switch it over to Zoom.
There is none on Zoom.
Okay. And with that, we will convene in the closed session, and we will report out at the next meeting. Thank you, everyone.